The April 13th, 2022 meeting of Woolbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treboiser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: on January 11th, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11 and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. De La Piccio, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed sessions will be regarding personnel matters. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Piccio. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Treboiser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So motion.
Motion by Mr. Treboiser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treboiser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here. Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Perez, second by Mr. Treboiser. Any? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices or bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the 2022-23 school year, on April 5th, 2022, we opened IFB 2303 Texas Instrument Calculators or Equivalent, and also IFB 2304 Ink Toner Cartridge Supplies. And on April 6th, 2022, we opened IFB 2307 Frederick Window Air Conditioners or Equivalents.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record superintendent's report for the month of March 2022.
Mr. President, I present the following monthly reports: student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Heather McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heather McKenzie is truly one of JFK's shining stars. She is a bright, articulate student leader that has provided great service to our school and community as a whole. Her energy and spirited enthusiasm is sincere and heartfelt. Heather serves as a member of various clubs and activities ranging from English Honor Society, Fashion Club, the Society for the Prevention of Teen Suicide, and Heroes and Cool Kids. A valued National Honor Society member, she has participated in many volunteer and goodwill projects. Heather is a treasured part of the Arts Department, performing in all of our spring musicals and key roles, as well as a student director. Her leadership is further evidenced by her role of varsity soccer captain, president of FCC LA, and stage manager of the school play. Heather's many accomplishments are highlighted by maintaining honor roll grades in advanced coursework. Her generosity with her time and energy have made her a great role model for our underclassmen. Heather has maximized her high school experience. Her resume of activities that serve our school and community, as well as being active in athletics and the arts, is deeply noteworthy. The respect afforded to her by advisors, teachers, coaches, and administrators is second to none. We wish Heather continued success this fall at Kent University. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So, I will be listing the great accomplishments of the school over the past few months. So, school number one, students participated in the Jump Broke Heart and raised $6,436. Students and staff collected more than 6,000 cans for the annual Super Bowl food drive benefiting We Repelish. Students and their families raised $6,200 by participating in a coin challenge, and all proceeds were donated to save the children, to help the children in Ukraine. School 19, on March 29th, the PTO hosted a paint night. PBSIS rewarded the students with positive behavior with a game board day. Family writing and family science programs were held on our second and fourth grade students and families. Our PTO ran a fundraiser at Colonia Dairy Made. On February 22nd, our Student Council collected $425 for St. Jude's Foundation in honor of Ms. Trupa's parents. School 26, parents are collecting canned tabs for the Ronald McDonald House in Long Branch. On March 30th, students from Grade 4 and Grade 5 were included into the NEHS. The Student Council is collecting food for the Middlesex County Spring Food Drive. The students are bringing in and donating loose change for the Ukraine relief efforts. School 29, the 5th grade NEHS collected 2,300 bags of food for We Replenish Food Drive. Student Council raised $635 for the Ukraine Crisis Relief Fund by Global Giving. Student Council sold kindness/lollypup cards for students to send messages to their friends. Ford's Middle School, the landscaping and gardening club has started. The Student Council will be putting together birthday boxes for the food pantry consisting of cake mixes, frosting candles, pans, and cans of soda. To honor Black History Month, the FMS Choir has joined with the Woolbridge High School, Woolbridge Middle School, and three elementary schools in all-day choral festival. On the 13th, at 7:00 PM, our three choirs will perform at Woolbridge High School. For the first time ever, a dance class is offered at Ford's Middle School. Girl is in the process of collecting clothing, feminine personal care items, and children clothing to donate to local women's shelter. On the 12th, Luis Rojas Martinez, Emery Arcena, and Natalia Holland were selected to read at the Evening with Young Poets. The FMS Croquet Club is now comprised of over 50 members. We will be celebrating their accomplishments and with an end-of-the-year video presentation which will feature the students and their work. John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, to celebrate Black History Month in February, daily announcements were made and a monthly reading selected featuring an African-American author for the book club. Students created the Hall of Heroes website and enjoyed a cooking class making a traditional African-American side dish while meeting the owner of a New Jersey-owned southern eatery, Sweet Teas. An assembly was held on February entitled Beautiful Tomorrow, empowering students to believe in themselves and recognize we can all make the decision that tomorrow will be beautiful. The JFK Equity Team and Diversity Council kicked off a new YouTube series entitled Green Table Talk, which encourages students to learn about diversity, equity, and inclusion. On February 17th, Tanisha Min won the title of Mr. JFK. The Science Honor Society raised awareness on rare diseases by holding fundraising events and collecting just over $450 for the CFC Foundation. Women's History Month was celebrated with daily announcements and a woman-focused reading selected from two women from the book club. The Arts Department hosted a women's-themed campus painting and a Hall of Hurstery to highlight women from different sectors from all around the world. From March 1st through March 6th, the Kennedy Players put on five fantastic performances of the musical Annie. On March 16th, eight students were inducted into the Chinese Honor Society. On March 30th, 45 new members were inducted into the National Honor Society. The month of April has started off by celebrating and bringing awareness to neurodiversity with a focus of autism awareness. Morning announcements focus on influential neurodiverse people in history. Students will also create public service announcements for different neurodiversity disorders, as well as partake in the Infinity Walk for the Autism Self Advocacy Network. Sheena Patel, Tanisha Min, and Kush Patel were recognized as the Senior of the Month for January, February, March. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. That was a very well put. We appreciate it. Heather, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have to leave, we totally understand.
Thank you. I would love to, but I have a suicide prevention meeting today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Dr. Perry, principal at JFK, for showing some support for his student. Thank you, Dr. Perry. Okay. Moving forward, the Woolbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect to the dignity and privacy of those legal rights who may be affected. Public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and section of township in which you reside, along with a specific agenda item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Just to make sure that I'm following the program correctly, we're now talking about, if we have any comments on the items for discussion?
Items that are on the agenda, agenda items only.
Right, A through J.
That's correct.
Okay. The format changed a little bit. We used to do the readings before on the approvals, but anyway, I have one question, and that pertains to the face coverings. As you may recall, I was hoping that there would be provisions-
Do you have an item, a number?
Yeah, it doesn't really have an item. It just says face coverings, and it would be-
Under-
Under face coverings.
Policy?
Policies, yes, I'm sorry. It is the policy section. And it pertains to Board Policy 5131.1, harassment. I see that it makes provisions, and wisely so, to protect any child that is still wearing a mask being harassed by any other student or staff or teacher, but it's quiet as to the reverse of that. Why doesn't it include anybody that decides that they don't want to wear a mask also being protected by the same bullying rules?
I would think it would apply both ways, but am I correct, Dr. Massimino?
Yes, students generally don't wear masks outside of the pandemic, so this is specific to that. So if somebody were bullied for not wearing a mask, that would be the same as any other bullying.
Okay. I was just, it was silent on it, and I was wondering why.
Everybody's covered.
Okay, that's my only concern.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 35 items to present to the Board.
I make a motion to move the superintendent's agenda.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Treboiser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Let's go, I have to, excuse me. On that superintendent's agenda, I will be abstaining in the name of Joseph Velez on item number 24. You all call on that? Okay.
Ms. Anderson?
On item number 24, I will abstain in the name Marie Anderson, yes to all other items.
Ms. Bourdain?
On the item of number 24, I will abstain in the name of Sue Bourdain, and yes to all others.
Mr. De La Pietro?
On item number 24, abstain in the name of Frank De La Pietro, yes on all other items.
Ms. Perez?
On item number 24, I will abstain in the name Jenny Perez. I also abstain from items number 33, 34, and 35, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
On item number 24, I will abstain in the name A.J. Sedana, yes on all others.
Mr. Treboiser?
I will abstain on the name Jonathan Treboiser. On item 24, yes on all other items.
And Mr. Velez?
Also, I will abstain on item number 24, yes to all other items.
And that's in your name, correct?
And name Joseph Velez.
Thank you.
Policy and planning, Ms. Perez?
The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 1 through 12 items. I will not be moving item number 13. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Okay. Curriculum Committee, Mr. Treboiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treboiser, a second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda, Mr. Treboiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 21 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treboiser, a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Technology Agenda, Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sedana, second by Mr. Treboiser. Any questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Athletics Extracurricular Agenda, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following 15 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, and a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Treboiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treboiser, a second by Ms. Anderson. Any questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Piccio, a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. The Equity Commission Agenda, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Bourdain. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 41 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
On items 11 and 33, I'll be abstaining in the name of Linda De La Pietro. Everything, yes for everything else.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
On item 21, I will be abstaining on the name Valerie Henderson, yes on all other items.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Negotiations Agenda, Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Education Committee for Negotiations with the WTA present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sedana, a second by Mr. Treboiser. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treboiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
None at this time.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Tom Maris, Ford, New Jersey. Going to try to get in, I have maybe six questions this evening. I'll try to read them slowly and then wait for the responses. At the conclusion, we can just go back through the numbers and answer them as, in that order?
Sure.
Okay, fine, thank you. Is the BOE selling or trading the property, pardon me, the parking lot right across the street on Ross Street to McCormick Administration and/or one of the redevelopers? If so, why? I think I've mentioned this before, and I've yet to get a definitive answer, and yet we know from activities at Town Hall and speaking to developers and redevelopers, apparently they are still planning on putting 92 apartments in what is currently a parking lot. And then another parking lot will go on North James, which will be five stories and I believe accommodate 250 vehicles. Obviously, that'll make a tremendous amount of traffic in this area, both via Hickler and pedestrian residents as well. And a four-story apartment building looking right down in this beautiful new school doesn't seem to really do much to enhance the school, the safety of the children, or the safety of the staff and teachers here. So I'd like to know where you stand on that, and if you are going to sell it, why? Number two, DEI. At what grade levels are students first introduced to discussions about sexual identity, sexual preferences, and sexual practices? Also, in that, there's a state statute which specifically is NJSA 18A-35:4.7, which gives the parents rights, I believe, to have their child excluded from that education should they wish to, and that any such teachings would be under the health. And again, I believe the parents would have the rights to say, "I do not want my child being taught any part of that because of my personal or religious beliefs." Can you comment as to how the school will handle that? And will you give the notification to the parents that they, in fact, do have that right if they choose not to have their child educated, along those lines? That's question number two. Is the school tracking direct and indirect costs related to DEI implementation? By that, I mean any special education where you're sending teachers out to special training, any materials that you're using? Again, direct or indirect, are you tracking what it is actually costing the taxpayer to implement DEI in your curriculums? Number four, has the state provided any additional directions to the Board as to what must be included in the DEI curriculums? Or can the Board of Education and the administration construct its own, which I believe is the case, curriculum following state guidelines? In other words, do you have wiggle room in the design and implementation, pardon me, of the DEI curriculums? And then finally, the Board's position, if in fact legislation goes through to have high school students, and I may be off on this, starting classes at 8:30 in the morning? How would that teach high school students to be more responsible about their sleeping habits? And how would that help them in any way relieve anxieties if that is one of the practices or one of the precepts of invoking such a regulation that they can start later in the day? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Maris, I'll do my best to try to hop around before I give certain questions to, obviously, certain members of the administration.
Sure.
With regards to the property across from Ross Street, I have not had any conversation, so I don't know what you have heard. I'm not aware of what those conversations are. I haven't been approached with anything, so I couldn't speak to anything from my personal perspective. With regard to question number two, I don't know if that's a DEI question as much as it's in the headlines about the health curriculum, because you mentioned the health.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm sure you saw the headline today. There's a lot of confusion about what the national standards look like, how they pair out to the 2020 state standards that are supposed to be rolled out for 2020. I got a notification from the superintendent's group that the governor had directed the Department of Education to take another look at it.
Okay.
So we're not, we're never going to move quicker than the state moves, because I think it's incumbent upon us, and I am a parent of students in this district, age level appropriate, grade level appropriate, cognitive ability appropriate. We want to make sure whatever we're given, we always take a look at, because we obviously want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students in the most appropriate fashion. So number two, and if that was more DEI than it was health curriculum, then I apologize if I mistook your question, but what I believe you're asking is when that would be taught. We're waiting for the state to get some clarification on it. I've been on that website the last week. It has changed. It changed as early as this morning, and I have shared that information with my colleagues. With regard to the DEI trainings and state resources, I'll defer to Mr. Ali on that, because that's obviously the area that he spends the most time. But your last question about classes starting later, obviously, it's a conversation that we're going to begin to have if this is something, because in a district this size, it impacts everything. I'm sure you read the letter from Superintendent Rocco, who posted a, what I thought was a very articulate letter, just explaining the domino effect, for lack of a better word, that it has on elementary schools, middle schools, after-school activities, before-school activities. So there's a lot of things we have to consider, especially in a district this size. I would be a liar to tell you that in the weeks that it rolled out, I had a full comprehensive plan, but it is absolutely something we're discussing, because if it does get rolled out, we want to make sure that we're aware of what those impacts would be, and we want to handle them as responsibly as possible. So we'll work with our local superintendents, county superintendent, executive county superintendent, and any other resource that we have, you know, through the legislative branch and what have you, because this is going to be, if it is done, it's a legislative mandate. So, you know, we're hopeful that there's certainly ample time to prepare if that's the direction they go in.
Appreciate that. And again, none of these are condemnations. It's just questions about getting out in front of it before it becomes something that's a fait accompli, and then we're at the tail end of it rather than the forefront of it.
If I could just add to your comment, there was the question about 18A-35:4.7. That went into effect in 1980.
Yes.
Just to give you all some context of this, parents have always been allowed to opt out of sex education, since many of us were in school, even before 1980, there were provisions. It wasn't necessarily in statute. I haven't gone back to look at the legislative history, but this is not new.
No.
But it's in the news right now, so it's new to many people who have not been doing this or studying this for a long time. But that statute has been on the books in New Jersey for the last, if my math served me correctly, forty-two years.
Forgive me for not pointing at that. I was aware of that. It's just that it's in the forefront now, because everybody's so concerned about that sex education, that this does become applicable. And parents should know that they have that option. But thank you.
Good. Mr. Ali?
I'd just like to clarify. Instruction on sexual practices has nothing to do with DEI. So I think sometimes the issues get convoluted. There's the legislative mandate regarding topics relative to diversity and inclusion, and then it's implementation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Comprehensive Health and Fitness that have been revised. These are not one and the same. So any sort of instruction on sexual practices is definitely not part of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
Regarding tracking costs, like we do with implementation with regard to anything regarding the curricula, we do track costs, and so we do know how much things cost. In regard to the, any sort of direction from the state, so the state has put out a website that includes resources that can be used in constructing a curriculum for diversity and inclusion, so that we can address the mandated topics, like the state does for everything else. It kind of gives us an idea of what must be taught, but then districts have the latitude to determine what core resource will be used in order to implement those required topics.
Just one quick one, then, the expenses are codified, and I get you.
Mr. Maris?
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody else has to have some time with the microphone.
Good evening. Paul Lund, Hope Lawn. I came here once before and started a topic, but I know the time is limited. I don't know if I can revisit that now. I just want to say that I, like a lot of citizens here, have just paid our property taxes and our state income tax, and to the tune of about seven-hundred a month now going into the school district. I've not paid very close attention. There's some hot-button issues that have come up recently. There's still a lot of concern around what's no longer, it's not deemed CRT at this level, but DEI is an offshoot of CRT, and I'm still concerned that it sets people at odds by making broad, painting an entire race with a broad stroke. For example, every white person in the room having an inherent tendency toward being an oppressor, and every person of color in the room having been a victim. I don't think that serves either group very well, and I'm still concerned about that creating more division than creating unity. I hear a lot about diversity, and it seems today diversity is how you look, outward appearance. There should be room for diversity of opinion. And I've talked to students, as a teacher now for thirteen years, who feel like if they come from a traditional household, traditional values, maybe from a Christian or Judeo-Christian household, that their values are not upheld anymore. In fact, they're under assault. Definition of marriage has changed, gender, identity, of which there's, I think, at last count, fifty-three. Not everyone's happy with that, clearly. And to say that it's limited, it's not part of DEI, and to say it's only under health, well, they can infuse that into any subject they want. They can look at the history of the gay rights movement and paint a certain revisionist history around that. They can infuse it in biology and say that it's not as simple as XX and XY. So we're not ignorant to the idea that you can relegate it to one part of the curriculum and not see it take over more and more of those parts. And last thing I will leave you with, when I was at the St. James Street Fair, the last time I ran as a Republican for council, which of course is a lost cause in Woodbridge, a student who was graduating from the high school told me that one of her teachers was giving a very hard time for not embracing alternate pronouns. Now, I understand that you want to share diversity of views, but there are a lot of people that are being battered, and really, their view and their diversity of view is not being respected. So, last thing I will ask then, in the form of a question. Murphy has recently backed off this push or this rush to infuse this gender teaching, which for second graders includes talking about the option, that it's not just the gender assigned to you, it's not just the body parts you happen to have, but you can actually choose that there are different options. And by fifth grade, they're actually given the option to go on puberty blockers, which right now the state of Texas Attorney General is looking at as a possible form of child abuse. In that context, I would like to know, as a taxpayer, how many people here, if they embrace, if the Murphy administration slips it past the parents and they embrace that agenda, how many of you are on board with the sexualization of our young ones? And I'd like to have an answer.
Dr. Massimino? We spoke with this before, but I'll let you address it.
Go ahead. I just, it's hard to answer, because a lot of the answers that your questions you're asking assume these conclusions that don't necessarily exist. So I'm going to let Dr. Massimino answer it from a, we've spoken about this in a lot of contexts, where these have been these, like, forced issues that have come before us over the last couple of months, that are really forced in a national sense. This is a local District Board of Education in the state of New Jersey, and we are mandated to implement anything that's given to us by the state of New Jersey. If anyone here, as a board member, as a board, decides that they don't want to go along with something that the state of New Jersey determines, that's an issue. That's an issue as a matter of law, because this board is required, as a condition of receipt of state aid, as a condition of a number of factors, to do that. So, listen, we all respect very much your views and everyone's views who come up to the microphone. We've been through that in other contexts as well, but this is not that forum. And what you're discussing, I think, mostly is a national debate. And, you know, this board has very little say in these overall issues. Whatever the state tells us, and ultimately, whatever Governor Murphy and his administration and the state legislature comes up with, we've got to follow it. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Lund, the only thing I'm going to say is I think the suppositions that are made are very general and sweeping and of your opinion. To say, you know, to equate CRT as DEI, I would disagree with that. Well, it's an offshoot. Well, I mean, I think if we really got creative, we could say a lot of things are an offshoot of a lot of things, so I would respectfully disagree. When you're talking about diversity, you're talking about race. We've talked about a lot of different things in terms of diversity and equity, inclusion, from special ed to ESL, to students that, you know, come from more humble beginnings than others. We talk about this in such a broad sense, so I struggle to answer your question, because it's very narrow with the assumption that, even though today the governor has said the Department of Education is going to review it, your question is prefaced with, if he sweeps it by, do we agree? Well, I don't think anybody would agree with anybody sweeping something by that affects anybody's children, but your statement is counter to what the governor just said this morning. He is looking at it. We are obviously going to look at whatever those members of the Department of Education reexamine, and we're going to make an educationally sound decision. So I respectfully would disagree with some of the generalizations or suppositions that you made to preface your question. I don't know that it really warrants an answer, because I don't know that you're not asking it in a rhetorical fashion.
Got it. Yeah. I know my time is up. I thank you for the effort, but I only really had one question, and that's where you stand on the gender agenda and curriculum.
That's not what you asked.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lund.
All right. I'll replay the tape, but thanks again.
John Vertaric Woodbridge. Well, I've got about three questions, probably one comment. There's a talk of the town, what happened in Colonial High School. And of course, I do talk to a lot of people, which is a lot of my clients. And I do agree with Mayor and Mr. Massimino, what they're doing about the get-to-it, finding what's going, what's going there to find what's happening. But I would definitely believe, I believe what we should do, not just at Colonial High School, we should study all the schools. As we know, some of our property owners, when we sell or buy properties, those properties go through all kinds of tests to find what's in the ground, what's in the buildings all over. And of course, we know the public buildings, they're built and they're never sold, and more likely, nothing's been checked, maybe pollution, maybe methane gas, maybe radon gas, but I'm talking chemical stuff coming from the ground and from the history of the, all over the world. Those buildings are usually built on the grounds that probably most undesirable to build on, and they're built, and we don't know what's underneath it. And I believe there's pictures since 1938, a Woodbridge township, the people who have a president, they have what you call a president of them. How did the Woodbridge looked before World War II? A lot of those sites that the buildings are now, or whatever it is, it's kind of a visible was there before, could be military passes, could be mission passes, could be chemical dumps, everything else. So I do encourage that we should check not just Colonial High School, we should look all the schools. And I believe there was in the past, there was the incidents that some classrooms were, so-called teachers were complaining, they were getting sick in them, and things like that. I think I would encourage it. Last time I was here, I did ask questions, and Mr. Massimino said that he's not aware of it. Next to the school, there will be ninety-four unit apartments built up there. When we go to council meetings, it's very obvious. Mayor talks about it, council people talks about it, everybody talks about it, that they would be built, not this side of the school. And my question was, that time, of course, you were ninety-four units. If there's a people, there are predators or what you call a sexual challenge or something, that would they be living next door, would you notify the parents of the kids that come to schools, that next to the school is a sex predator living there? Because we do, if you sell the house, we have to know where the people came from, so they check the best, and of course, we have to notify the parents. And on DEI, we have American schools in foreign countries, and to my knowledge, I know some of my grandchildren go to those schools, and it comes, there's some of the schools that do have a religion. And most important is, if the student or the parent doesn't feel comfortable, whether be taught the DEI, can they abstain? Get out of our classrooms, like they do in foreign countries, because they don't agree with it? And second question, because DEI, are they going to be rated, or what gives some kind of, what do you call it, degraded, or what they're going to learn at school? Or this is just a, you know, just talk to make sure what they know, what they're supposed to know, what they don't know? So this is not part of education, and I think what you want to teach with DEI, give us up to the parents, grandparents, whatever it is. By the time they go to school, most of us know about birds and the bees, and a lot of different things. So please, stay the hell out of it. And it's not the national level, it's just the state level, and I think people should have the head exams. Thank you. Any answers?
Okay, you're complete with your statement? Okay. I will address the question on the sex offender notification, because I'm a little familiar with it, and then I'll pass it over to Dr. Massimino. The sex offender registration is run by the county prosecutor's office and the state police. They determine who goes on these lists, and they will notify the schools or the neighbors in the area, or the churches in the area. It's their responsibility. The school itself doesn't go and notify parents that there's a sex offender living in the area. That's a responsibility of the police department. And the police department knows the vehicles that they drive, where they live, where they work, their photograph is on file. We do as much as legally as possible to register the sex offenders and monitor their activity to be as safe as possible. Okay? And then the other question is, Dr. Massimino?
DEI is not a course, so there is no grade. The last comment, again, I think you're linking it to the health standards, which is, again, in the news due to national standards that I feel like we've already addressed. So if that was your question, no, there's no grade.
Okay. How about at Colonial School?
That's it, sir. We're done. You got any other question? Any other answers?
There was no, there was no question. You say your opinion was we should test all the schools.
Well, my opinion was, but I agree with what you, to study, to make sure you get to it.
Right. That was your suggestion.
My question would be, are you going to do the rest of the school or just Colonial?
Well, right now, obviously, a concern was raised, so we're testing Colonial.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. James Nebraska, Woodbridge proper. My pronouns are he and him. Happy Earth Month and an early Happy Earth Day. As you're all well aware, a corporation by the name of Competitive Power Ventures has proposed to build and operate a 630-megawatt gas-fired power plant in the Caysby section of our community. This would be the third fossil fuel power plant in Woodbridge Township, and it would be situated directly next to an existing gas-fired power plant that is already emitting millions of tons of greenhouse gases and toxic pollutants that are negatively impacting public health and air quality. We are here tonight to ask for our Board of Education and Central Administration's support in calling on Governor Murphy to reject permits for the proposed gas-fired power plant through the adoption of the resolution you were all emailed. This resolution has thus far been passed by the Edison Council, the Highland Park Council, the Hoboken Council, the Perth Amboy Green Team, and most recently by the Highland Park Board of Education. If the proposal as currently designed moves forward, it would result in a fossil fuel-fired power plant operating 24/7/365 for decades. The power plant would be a major new source of air pollution in the state, including greenhouse gas emissions, bringing us backwards in the fight to protect public health and create a sustainable and resilient clean energy economy. Pollutants produced by the plant would include particulate matter, ammonia, sulfur dioxide, sulfuric acid, carbon monoxide, volatile organic compounds, nitrogen oxides, which contribute to the formation of acid rain, ozone, and smog, and known carcinogens such as formaldehyde. Exposure to these pollutants is linked to cancer, neurological, cardiovascular, and respiratory disease, premature death, and birth defects. The proposed gas-fired power plant would be situated in Caysby, the least white section of Woodbridge Township, less than one mile from Edison, less than two miles from Perth Amboy and South Amboy, and less than three miles from Matson and Sayerville, with thousands of homes and many parks and schools sitting directly downwind from the proposed site. Predominantly low-income communities of color would be disproportionately impacted by the pollution from this power plant. Each of these communities has been designated as overburdened under New Jersey's new environmental justice law. These densely populated areas would be adversely affected by adding a major source of air pollution. Building a new fossil fuel power plant that would operate for decades directly contradicts New Jersey's legal commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by eighty percent below 2006 levels by 2050. Governor Murphy also has signed recent laws and issued a wide range of executive orders to fight climate change and promote environmental justice by transitioning New Jersey to 100% clean energy by 2050. We need Governor Murphy to uphold the state's commitments by rejecting this gas-fired power plant proposal. You know, having attended Colonial High School myself from 1996 to 2000, I'd be lying if I said I wasn't also concerned about the growing number of former students and staff members who have developed brain tumors. I commend the township for taking this seriously and not waiting for other levels of government to act, issuing an emergency contract to experts to do intensive environmental testing of the campus. But the truth is that I'm much more concerned about this proposed third toxic power plant adversely affecting the health of our future generations. There's no way we can look our children in the eye with a clear conscience without trying to do something to stop this, and I hope our community leaders will act with the same sense of urgency as they are with the Colonial High School situation. Last week's sobering report from the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change stresses how we simply must cease new fossil fuel projects or else face absolutely catastrophic consequences. "The science has been ever more consistent and ever more clear," said Inger Anderson, Executive Director of the UN Environment Program. "What's needed now is political change," she added. "That's what it will take, the ability to look beyond current interests. Governments, businesses, organizations, and individuals all must summon the willpower to do better." To quote from Dr. Seuss's classic children's book, The Lorax, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." We sincerely hope that our Woodbridge Board of Education and Central Administration will care enough to stand against this proposed third toxic power plant in our already environmentally overburdened community and pass this resolution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Nebraska.
And I have thirty seconds if anyone would like to respond to that at all.
We will not take a position on that resolution. It's not really a Board of Education matter. I believe Mr. Bush has a statement on that.
This, if it's not an education-related issue, I don't think the board is going to be acting in response to it. And is your time done, sir? It's not, you don't get the full time. If you're done speaking, then it's over. It's up to you. But if you have anything else to say?
But not education-related?
It's not. It's a policy matter that, I'm sure you've spoken to municipality about it, but it's not related to this. This board wants to act on matters that deal with issues before it with related to the education of children. So, thank you.
I'm Roberta Martin. I live on Lyman Avenue. So what you're saying basically is...
So what you're saying basically is that you care about the education of kids, but not their health. This is an important matter, the power plant. Their company even had a sheet out of all the toxins that they would be spewing out. So again, the education, but what about the health of the students in the area? It's part of your job, as far as I'm concerned.
All right, so I'll, okay, so what I'm saying is, and let me just be very clear, is that if the board, and we've had this issue before, Mr. DeBraske, on another matter, this board has no ability to act on this particular issue before it. What you're asking us to do, I think, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, is to adopt a resolution that is, and I've used this word before, performative, because what we're doing here is we'd be acting on a resolution to say we support or we oppose something, right? Whether it's this issue or anything else. And if the board has no role specifically in whether or not to grant an approval of something or reject it, then the board's not going to take that up. And I, it's hard, because I'm representing a board, and I'm sort of looking at people to see their reactions, but while I don't think that they're necessarily for or against this particular issue, there may be some deep concern even among particular board members up here. But for the board to act on something like this, it's just not within our purview.
Are there any other questions in public? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Perez. Second, Mr. Delapietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose?